Free Hill Street value ten thousand dollars Friday of ecstasy. And we've, it's not seized for the town, but we, for the feds and stuff everywhere. It's about ninety thousand dollars in the past two weeks of drug value and vehicles and all kinds of stuff. But I'll have the numbers next month more specific as it just happened the last couple of weeks.
Now Jared, I know it's a part of that we talked about as far as creating our drug fund again, that some of that if we get to keep that you compensate and I know that's go through process.
Hopefully, well, hopefully we're looking at, hopefully about sixty grand.
Okay, I know we were talking about that, but it takes a while to go through the process to be approved.
We've already went to court, we go to court Wednesday for the money.
Yeah.
But we have to wait for the case to be over and we just sent that case federal. So it's gonna be a year. On that one it'll probably be a year, I'm guessing. The seventy thousand dollar drug we seized, I don't know.
Well, we never know, because I know it's a process that before you can do anything with it. So there's a time frame.
It takes a minute.
Yeah, but at least if it is, we can open back up the drug funds and then they can utilize that and they can keep all that money as long as it's still identified as drug funds, correct?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, yeah, and whatever you need, we just have to put.
It won't come out of the town budget.
No, it'll be additional funding you have to do what you need to do. And you do have a position that we're open, that we're, that's open, correct?
Oh, Tony's coming back.
Is he?
He just deployed.
Oh, did he?
He's in the desert, he'll be back three weeks.
Okay, so I knew that we had the position.
Yeah, he's coming back.
You spoke with him, so he said he'll be back, so.
They're working like seventy hours a week.
Maybe he wants to come back, it might be great. Does anyone have any other questions for you?
I was curious about the drugs, are these things coming through on the interstate primarily?
They're picking them up. These are all Coffee County, Franklin County residents. They're meeting here from Atlanta where they're getting from the fire town.
So, yes.
And then second question, I know there are a lot of people from Laurel Lake here tonight. Folks have asked me about something that happened a couple of nights ago early where there was police activity on our road.
Yeah, we're safe.
Is that something you can talk about?
No.
Okay.
You're safe.
Safe, goodness, thank you.
And the other thing, you're gonna have officers here for July the fourth, correct?
Yes.
To help with the fire department? Okay, now just now we talked about it, of course, I know we can, if you need to run, it's all done. And one of the things while you're here, Travis is gonna come into his report and he's gonna mention it. I know we also have a Red Cross day scheduled for July twenty second. And Jessica's working with Travis to do that. Of course, we have more information if we can have officers there as well. At that time, we'll get together and once we get all the details, can announce it.
Just remind me closer, good.
We will, and we talked to Tony too, because the other day to put on the calendar.
He's got COVID, dropped house, so he's out for this week.
Well, there's a lot of people guiding him.
Yeah, he's, he's out.
That ain't good, but I mean, last week he didn't have it.
He's fine, he has, his fever broke, he's good now. He called me today, but I told him, I said, man, you can't come back.
No, it's five days now at least without, after the fever, so, alright.
Alright.
Anybody have anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate you. Alright, we'll go to the fire department, Travis.
Room fifteen calls for the month, no structure fires, been pretty quiet, knock on wood. Just cars, you know, car wrecks and service calls. We've increased the roster of twenty-four members, we gained four members this month. So we're planning to work several town events within the fire department. Mayor just talked to Jared about the police department side. Fourth of July, the Red Cross event, that's July the twenty-second. We're trying to get all that penciled in and stoned. Probably around two o'clock here at the park, there'll be, you know, activities for kids and whatnot. The mountain market event, the fire department will be there and have the fire prevention, fire safety table. And inside in the fire department, we've been doing gear inspections for our annual, you know, kind of see what's deteriorated, see what's broken. So far, we've got two sets of gear that's bad that, you know, we're looking probably to replace to, you know, those two of our active guys, so that's on the agenda. Everything else been pretty quiet on the fire department side.
Did he get your gear?
I did.
Your gear came in, you said he got his, he got his gear.
Gear in the internet service.
And you're working on a couple of fundraisers?
Yep.
Something else that has to be approved through this board, and we have a lady that, you know, now puts it up. Travis and I talked not only to have the website, but we have a Money Go Fire Department page. And of course, because of insurance and different reasons, Travis and his fireman would send, you or Kevin, somebody would have to send the information.
Send the information.
To them, and then they can put it up and put up photos and things that happen. So he would work with the office to make sure it's done, but we would have that in addition. So we're gonna do that, we need to approve that correctly because of that ordinance. Then we do it that way, and I know you mentioned it to me, and we can do it tonight, and then you and Karen and all them could get to work on it. If we can have a motion to approve them.
I think it'd be good.
Money Go, on, well, you know, you now a full-time person, we may have to. Fire, Money Go Fire Department Facebook page that would be linked with the rest of it, and we can, so.
Now, what do we have to do, we have to make a motion?
You do, because there's an ordinance that says it has to come through the council, so.
We have one.
Yeah, this was, well, it was because there was a lot of internet stuff that's put out there that people can replicate. Yeah, issues, it's not like we're trying to control it, but anybody could put something out there they do now. You might be from Europe, you know, so, but if you wanna make a motion that you and Lynetta and, well, I said Lynetta, she's the one that does it now, but through the front office.
Community and let them see what we're into and what we're doing.
Make you aware of some of the fundraisers that you've got planned.
Just the hundred registered were planned, so.
And I mean, we've been doing a lot of this stuff for a long time now, you know, with the council and you all. And of course, now you got assistant chief and other people and the training you're getting. So I have a motion that we create a Money Go Fire Department page that on Facebook, you know, will go through the process with the chief, I have to sign off, he's assistant chief, but it'll come through. He'll have the person here at the office to put in on, you know, go through that, they'll work together.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we create a Money Go Facebook page.
For the Money Go Fire Department?
Money Go Fire Department. We can have a Facebook page, let's do a Money Go Fire Department page.
It'll be.
Let's make that motion.
It'll be on Facebook linked with everything else, just like the one we have now. I mean, it'll be on the website too, so.
I'll work, thank you.
Do you have a second? We have a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Alain Baker?
Uh-huh.
Get with them tomorrow and start getting what you need done.
You wanna hear the codes side? I got a little bit of codes needs for you.
Yeah, that's the next one, so, yeah.
So the codes enforcement side, I mean, it's typical codes. We've had two new complaints over the month, it's been addressed and looked into. We've got three follow-up complaints, you know, just stuff that's carried over and, you know, some of those complaints have been fulfilled, you know, there's one that's a disabled gentleman that he's, we're trying to work with an alternative solution for him to come up with, you know, something that's satisfactory, that he gets what he needs done and, you know, trying to get him some help to do it. Several illegal signs that they've, you know, posted off throughout the town, middle state signs, stuff like that that I've been dealing with and pulling. I mean, pretty quite nice honestly for the codes side.
And I know Earl was here, but Earl's sick, so he's not here, so he's gonna get with you about the signage of the new businesses that were already approved.
I've got one new business that put in the kangaroo, I think, put in for an upgraded sign. I've dealt with that email, but boy, there's nothing else on that, Earl's kinda handling that.
Well, he said he'd get with you about the Southern Tire, which was approved before they did that. And he said there's also some other signage that are going on just to contact him because he's out. He did bring some information tonight, but he's not, he's not well, so he said we need to call him on the phone, we can reach him, but, so he's all sick right now, so.
Alright, thank you.
Good job.
You may have anything else?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Travis. Okay, well, since he went over codes, I do have the information that Earl left, so we have three business permits here. Mike, I think you're twenty-four towing, is that correct?
Yeah, that would be the name that I want.
Well, that's what we've got on this permit here, so do you wanna come up here and sort of tell folks a little bit what it is? And I know you're zoned for that, it's, tell them where the actual location is, and then, y'all wanna look over this one? Earl said it was ready, but he could be the first.
Just finally, just like, like it says in the description, we just handle towing, recovery, mainly large vehicles.
Now, you're gonna be located, I know it says on.
Says to Bow Street.
Dixie Lee Avenue.
Oh, okay.
The main office is located on the Bow Street, but I have a easier to get to location off of Dixie Lee Avenue for a larger vehicle.
That's the one that he has the permit for, correct?
Yes.
So, and it is zoned for that, that area, we checked it, and it's in the city limits. So do you have a motion to approve this business permit for Mr.?
Earl signed off on it.
Yeah, Earl did sign off, he gave it to me, yeah, Earl's willing to give it to me.
I'll second.
Alain Baker?
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
They'll just get you a permit, because we don't charge you for that the way we do.
Okay, thank you.
Just come see there, you're welcome. Okay, next is Money Go Motorcross. Avery? Yep, come on up, that's the reason we get you, we can record you, sir. Avery has a business here, but he's adding to his business, so this is, Money Go.
Motorsports.
Yeah, but you also now have Money Go Tire Auto, I'm trying to reach her for me.
Yes. So Money Go Motorsports with the OHV parks in Grundy, the one in South Pittsburgh, and I have to mention our power lines and all the other things around here, not any one of us can't see. Trucks with side-by-side going by Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we're just gonna take advantage of that and create our own up here on the mountain for rental.
And he's already zoned for it, Earl said it was good, so he just wanted to add to his business, but also they need to have a permit for that, so.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve Money Go Motorsports.
It's gonna be at the same location there, right?
Right.
We are gonna base it out of Money Go Tire for now, and then when we build on the lot next to us in the fenced-in lot, we'll tear the fence down, get rid of that ugly fence and put a present.
Right now, this location says the same place, this particular location. Alright, Alain Baker?
Uh, what he did, no, we got to say.
I thought you had a second, I thought Alvin did, did you not?
Yeah, I'll say.
Okay, well, you did, now, Alain Baker?
Uh.
Okay. Then next, where is Hi Bob's Healing, here she is. She's already got a business and she's adding to it already at the country mart, which is really exciting. We need to go, it's just fall, so, Lord knows we need it. Anyhow, folks, Earl said this one was good too, you wanna tell them what you do?
I just wanna say, hey, I'm Annalee, and hello, everyone. I was here a year ago talking about it, yoga, you might think, oh my God, you gotta wear tight pants, I can't touch my toes. I want you to know that's all wrong, that flexibility, mobility, and strength are for everyone and there's no judgment. So just saying, I know yoga's got some weird things attached to it, stretching and breathing. Now, this new space is an infrared sauna also, why? It's ninety-five degrees outside. Why would I wanna sit in a sauna? Well, there's a lot of health benefits, just by sitting in this magical sauna, you can decrease blood pressure, increase circulation, strengthen your heart, reduce pain and inflammation, and feel relaxed all while sitting. So if you're a person who wants to take a pill and make it all disappear, this is for you. You're sitting, you're sweating, you feel awesome. So yeah, that's the new business, you can come and relax, very relaxing, beautiful space. If that's all new to you, I don't know, just come experience it for yourself. We're on the left side entrance, don't be shy, I'm not a shy person, so.
You have any questions?
That was pretty obvious.
Yeah, I mean, I'm the front of the house, Oliver is back of the house.
So, but of course Earl said it was already approved for there, and she's just adding to her business, which is really good, I mean, yeah, sure.
She's gonna do it, she's coming.
Hey, that's right.
Marilyn's gonna be there soon.
Yeah, listen, Jared told me the other day, when Michelle was talking about Saturday at the amphitheater, so, yeah, we're gonna do it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve Hi Bob's Healing. That's definitely.
Okay, any other discussion? Alain Baker? Now I'll add that to your permit, and you can come to office and get it. Hey, enjoy your night, and congratulations on your anniversary.
Thank you so much.
So she's gonna get out of here, she's got an anniversary going ahead. Okay, next.
I look so fancy.
Let's do this to, let's, Jessica, since you've gotta stay, I'm gonna go up to utilities and roads, so they don't have to stay. They got, I know Rose has got something to do, but I know we're gonna get you up first, come on up, sir.
I touched with the Marion County Road Commissioner today about doing some paving, and he said it'd be about a month out. He'd get up, he'd get with me before then, there's some measuring on our roads. And then I talked to the Grundy County side about trees and stuff hanging over in the road with their boom mower, cut some of that stuff back. And he said as soon as they got their machine going and some of their stuff got, it'd be big with us.
And I know you and I discussed several things that happened, one, we wanna clarify that, I think it came from Facebook Campbell, but there was a pothole out at Laurel Lake, and you guys took care of that one, correct? I'm not talking about the massive part of the roads that need fixed, you're gonna be doing portions of paving, that's all we can do.
They spent a couple of days out there last week doing patching them, and they made several trips to make sure they got what they could, the shoulders and stuff, you know, there's nothing you can do with.
One of the things that also, there was questions about, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I told them I'd let them know. We were cutting grass and cutting with our tractor, correct, down here?
Yeah.
And it was really high, so it was time to cut.
Right.
And there was a wet spot that we got stuck in, and they had to be pulled out. So it wasn't like anybody, and there was any runoff.
No.
Is that correct, what happened there, so we could?
Yes, and, and it's been that way the twenty-some-odd years I've been here.
So it's nothing different.
It's, it's a swamp, it's not a creek, it's not a, nothing like that, it's just a swamp. Now, if you wanna rent us a helicopter, we wouldn't pull weeds, we wouldn't do that, but.
But no, I'm just saying, I didn't know, and you were out, and I thought I'd let you know, and I talked to John, but the point was, you said, y'all both told me it's always been like that. But what actually happened that time whenever people put pictures, you know, and saying, is that the tractor got stuck, you know, had to remove it. We couldn't leave it down there, so that's what happened, and it's been like that a long time.
Right, I mean, since I've been here, twenty-two years, so.
And if we had additional money, we'd be fixing roads, right now we can't go down there, big swamps.
Exactly.
Correct, because, you know, that's where we're at.
Yeah.
Do y'all have any other questions?
Have you got a mower yet?
No.
Well, they're waiting on it.
It's in the mail, I reckon, I smell the mail, it is.
Well, they've ordered it.
Well, the good thing is, it's not running, so.
Yeah, we're not needed, it's all dying, so.
Yeah.
Can they reveal to us where in Marion County the paving will happen?
You live in Marion?
No, it's, it's Laurel Lake, they're looking at, because, Banner, we're gonna go over at the next meeting how many roads we got fixed and what we did span from Grundy County, Marion County, you said, you'll have that list. Also, one of the things Banner's working on is everybody knows, well, I'll take them back, that's an assumption, that we did a GIS system when we started our assess, was it our assess, assessment? And for the capacity test we've been working on, so that's our water, sewer, and stormwater drains. We've got our engineer here, someone looking over him. Now, Banner and I have been going through the list, Nate's been helping us, we're gonna add the roads to that list, which Travis and then will be doing, so we'll have a complete system as we build and as we add, as we repair and we fix. But it's taking them, you know, a little bit to get her done, and so we're getting it done. But that money will be applied to the grant money that we've received, that we can use as matching dollars. So, and Banner's working on that as well.
Yeah, yeah, we might get that helicopter then.
Well, and that's why the recovery money, I'll tell them that Banner needs a helicopter and a pilot to drive it, so, unless you wanna learn.
No.
Anybody have any questions? Hey, you can always learn. Alright, thank you, sir, we appreciate it. If you're done. Alright, utilities, John, you wanna come out and then we'll get Travis up, but last you stayed, Travis gets done, 'cause people's got a bunch of questions.
Got one?
John, emergency purchase for the air conditioner and why, and how much we need to approve, 'cause I know you had one.
Well, how much we need to approve, I don't know for sure.
Has he to get you?
Not yet, no.
Well, do we need to title this meeting and have a special to present it because of that? Because, so, what it is, explain to them what's going on for the records, so they'll know what happened here.
Well, down the wastewater plant there, it went out. We've had trouble with it, we've had it patched like five times. And the other day it was eighty-eight degrees in there, and we gotta keep it cool on kind of chemicals and equipment. So anyway, I told them about it, they was talking about getting bid, and I said, we gotta do something to get it, before we get the temperature down in the building. We had, we borrowed fans from the fire department, but that didn't do it, had doors open. And it's just that the chemicals and the equipment, we gotta keep it operating temperatures, like seventy-two degrees, seventy-five, keep the chemicals good. So that's the reason that we're trying to get it good and quick we can.
When you come in, you say it was eighty degrees with the fans on, right?
Eighty, yeah.
Debbie, you called the auditor and talked to the C P A and said that that's the way you need to do it, because it would, it would mess up our testing. Let's clarify too, something while you're talking about testing, is that I know there was an issue and a question asked, and we were not in compliance about whatever tests that were sent in utilities, can you clarify that? What happened with, it was sent in and they said it was a different date, so you sent it back in?
For the water plant?
Yeah, for utilities.
Well, the state gives the water plant operating wrong date.
But you had sent in the information?
They give him the wrong date, so then he had to send it in again.
And so the date thing was that, there was nothing?
Exactly, that's what it was.
So then it wasn't even just?
It was a mix-up in the date.
But it was from the state's direction?
Right, it was.
So I know somebody asked you about that the other day, and we just wanted to clarify what happened there.
That's what it was, yeah.
So, all the processes were done, they just got their dates confused.
And since you're talking about water, I checked the date, our high water level at the lake is eleven foot eight, and we're down to eleven feet. So we dropped eight inches, which is nothing.
Did you have any type of estimate, I mean, is it less than twenty thousand? I think you told me at one time it was eighteen that you would look at for, for the air conditioner that you need, because we need to have an amount.
It'd probably be, I'm just guessing, probably less than ten thousand, 'cause it's a three-phase unit. And he's gonna replace the outside, he's gonna replace the coals inside. So it'll probably be, I'm gonna say less than ten thousand.
Well, that's what we were saying, since you don't have, and I mean, I don't know, you just said it was, I know y'all clarified that you had to give it. So, and you have it in your budget to purchase it, that's not the problem. But since we don't have an amount.
I'll try to get him in the moment.
Well, we probably need to, we probably need to approve not to exceed that amount. So do you think twelve thousand will take care of it all? I mean, I'm just.
Yeah, I'm sure it will.
Well, I mean, we don't, you don't have to spend it, if you got it, 'cause we printing money, you know what I'm saying? But the thing is, if we approved the twelve thousand, because that way we don't have to take, go ahead and make progress with it. So, council, what do y'all wanna do?
You think twelve thousand's a given number?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, so.
I'd like the motion to approve.
Twelve thousand, we want to purchase this air conditioning?
Not exceed twelve thousand, I second.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Well, Alvin?
Yes.
Jessica, yes. So, Ray?
Yes.
I said, yes, so you've got, you were saying, we've been checking the lake levels for quite some time now? Just 'cause, and so we're still, what'd you say?
We're in good shape, we dropped eight inches.
But that's a spillway, right?
That was a, that's below the spillway, eleven eight is at the top of the spillway.
Yeah.
We're eight inches above that.
So there's no panting, no drought load?
No, anybody will start to get water.
Well, I mean, we're just, and we need to keep an eye on it, a lot of things are going on, and we have been, but, and we've always done it, we're just now starting to report it.
Right, and I think Friday it was, I think it was eleven six Friday, when I checked on the lake Friday afternoon. So, you know, the sun pulls it out pretty quick, but still, we're in good shape.
Do you get Cooley's riffed out there too, or just Monique?
Just Money Go.
Okay. Cooley's is only used in a drought load, and it has to follow through a certain level before we give it a draw.
We do have a arm peg that we put out there when Cooley's was high, when the water was up to the normal level. We do have an arm peg that we put out there, we can measure from that, but as far as anything on the dam rig, we don't have that, not out there.
Well, Travis will do even more about this, but something that we've been working on for a while, of course, these go reports and I know all the stuff we've been doing for quite some time. But we also have looked at alternatives as we grow, and we grow smart, is impoundments. And John and I both spoke with T D A, and they're going to do some research on that, because you gotta look at every alternative from tanks to interconnections to impoundments. We're not really sure the state will allow them, at one time they were not allowed, you know, building a lake. But that is something we're actually trying to find out, and we've also got Southeastern Development and a couple other agencies looking at funding, if it were to be possible. And the T D A's the one we have to go through with environmental, and we're actually pursuing that as we speak, as well as other alternatives. So, and, 'cause we're gonna grow, we just wanna grow smart, you know, as we do it. Alvin, you have anything, John? Jessica?
No.
So, Ray? Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hey, we use that until Travis leaves, we're gonna get Travis up next, if you don't mind. Travis, of course Travis is our engineer, and he's here to report on what we've been doing, where we're doing. People have asked about our capacity tests and assessments, we've been working on this for about a year and a half now, but mini-levels and different things. So he's here to do some reporting on the status of where we're at, so.
Okay, we'll start out with the grants portion and the funding. We are currently in the process of procuring multiple grants to perform water and sewer work. We have the A R C grant, which is for five hundred thousand dollars with a total cost share match of five hundred seventy-nine thousand, six hundred twenty dollars, which will be covered through additional funds. So what that means is the town will not have to, to pay that cost share for the A R C funding. We are pairing that with the A R P funding, which covers the cost share for that. And Money Go's portion is seven hundred twenty-two thousand, four hundred forty-five thousand dollars. So with those two grants, along with some local E D U funds, we are proceeding with an I N I correction project to eliminate some of the I N I that we identified early on last year during the flow monitoring and S S E S work. That correction will open up some capacity on the sewer site that we've identified. And as a part of that, we will be televising and cleaning the entire system during wet weather periods, so that we'll be able to see the defects. So the town does not own their own cleaning and television equipment. And so we have talked to contractors that we utilize on other projects, and have gotten some, some bulk pricing from them. So once the weather turns wet again, so we can see the defects, then we will televise the system. And there's a lot of grease in the area, a lot of issues with blockages, and so we'll utilize the cleaning part with our equipment while they're here to do that. So that'll be done later on this year as part of this project. Currently, we are underway with the capacity evaluation with both the water and sewer systems. And this is important, just, it's really dovetails into the, to the grant work that we're doing with the sewer evaluation, but to identify what capacity remaining that we have. We know what I N I that we're trying to remove, and so we're looking at all the pump stations in the system. There are a significant number of pump stations that are utilized throughout the sewer system. There's one main station at the old treatment plant, the south center station is another fairly larger station in the system. And then there's a lot of smaller systems that manifold into the pressure force mains. And so getting all of that into one place in a model where we can see how they interact is very important, especially when you look at connecting on additional sewer surfaces. Because once you start adding flow to a manifolded pressure system, then that will change the head on the pumps and the force mains. So once we have that in the model, then we'll be able to identify areas that may have additional capacity concerns that we weren't aware of. So we're in the process of doing that. We, we spent last, several days last week in the field with the town staff doing drawdowns of a number of the stations to gather information. So we're well underway with that. We've been working with the town staff to get water usage records for the water side and capacity. So we've applied for S R F grants for additional storage tanks, and we'll know more about that later on this year. And so there's a lot, lot going on. A lot of work has been accomplished over the last year to get us to this point, to put us in a position where we can begin to answer some of these questions and update. The town has, currently has a functioning online map that has water, sewer, and storm in their G I S map that's accessible to all town staff, has all the information that's been collected, and so no more paper maps on the walls, but all the information is, is accessible through phones, digital devices, computers. And so something that can be used as a planning tool going forward. And just as the mayor said, to, to add the streets and that information along to that. So, so that can be built upon in the future as other layers such as street lamps, or sidewalks, or city streets, all, all those types of things. Paving, annual paving contracts, budgeting, all of those things could be included in the G I S. So, I've said there's a lot going on, if you have specific questions about any of the projects, but.
Capacity test, we said probably about six. We said probably about sixty days out could be completion, do we, we'll have a good handle on that because a lot of people are asking, and at this point in time, well, like I said, we want to grow smart as we're doing these things, uh, looking at every alternatives. There's two partners that are bringing in I N I that we've spoke with both of them that are connected to different entities there and trying to work those things out. So, of course, the paint board, but we're treating their, well, define I N I in the, in the terms.
It is inflow and infiltration that's basically rainwater that should not be in the sanitary sewer, but should be in the storm sewer.
And we, our two major partners both have those and we've identified them and trying to get those fixed through those things, I guess you'd say partners, so. And, uh, so we're at this point in time and have been for quite some time continuing to work that as we get funding. So we have one point two seven million, is that correct? That we're utilizing. And also in that process, and Janet will be up here in a minute, but as we had worked, going back to corridor plan, we had said, um, in the twenty, thirty-five or the next five years, we're going to have increased the sewer plan. Is this not correct regardless because we've grown? I mean, uh, probably so, there's things that are happening, there's home building, you know? And so for that, then also looking at, of course, John correct me if I'm using the wrong terms because we were here when we put the sewer plan online, but it was built in modular so where we could increase it. At that time, we had planned for future growth, it just didn't grow there for several years. And now we're at the point to do that plan, correct? So we're also including that in this process as we're correcting all of the areas and we look at how we can grow and how we can grow smart.
That's right. And that, those type of questions will be answered as part of the capacity analysis for the sewer system. So that the force mains, the pump stations, and the treatment plant, all, those are all inclusive in the model that we'll, we'll look at. And on the water side of it, the storage tanks, uh, and the water treatment plant, their high service pumps and storage, and all, all of that will be included on the water side.
And we've also talked to the partners on the county, where there's interconnections, if we did need water during that growth period, they would be available. And that's what Big Creek had said and others, you know, that we could utilize. Of course, you know, like I said, we're not saying we're doing that, we're just saying what are our alternatives and how do we get from here to there, you know?
That's right. We're, we're finding out the base data so that we can, we know how to proceed in what direction.
And as we all know, there's American Recovery Money supposed to come at one time and as we've been advised for quite some time now, we're prepared to get some of that money of forgiveness back as we did before, you know, so.
We're working with Southeastern Development District to, uh, um, put together applications and P R's for the A R P funds that will, that will begin to go in over the next couple of weeks.
And we've been told both from the state, T-DAC, T-DOT, and the things that we're working on, that we're in a good position to do that. We just keep on administering the way, correct?
That's great.
And you, uh, have a handout for these folks because this is a lot of determinality, I don't understand, but ask for a checklist and so we can have that, so we can also put it online for any questions that they may have.
Yep, I have it all on the computer, I can email that to the board.
John, one of the things that happened today, we were talking about, people have been calling you about certain things that people are needing for this growth, like the grinder pumps and things like that, correct? And since the capacity test has to be known, do you-
That's great.
Then they're referring them onto you and of course they're taking care of those costs as it happens.
That's great. We're, we're proceeding as quickly as we can and it's just a lot of information to process and, uh, you know, consumption records and pump station drawdowns and pump station manufacturer records that we're gathering and trying to incorporate all of that into one place. It's time and simple, we're, we know there's, there's a need and we're working as quickly as we can to get that put in.
Allen, you have any questions for Travis?
No.
Jessica?
I, I was gonna ask about the fire hydrant, uh, studies that you up there or repairs.
We, uh, we, we weren't a part of that. Uh, they actually, uh, the town bid that separate with Rogers Hydrant Group. They came in, performed that work and that, that was completed back two months ago, I think. Uh, we have been in contact with them, we've received all of their results and all of that data is incorporated into the G I S map. And so all of that has already been integrated with your G I S.
John can answer the question on the status because I know they're working with the fire department, am I correct, John?
Right, uh, and I've got a booklet, well, three of them, I think, you've got all the hazards in it.
Uh-huh.
Shows the flow, uh, what color it is, what color it needs to be. And I've, I've left the paint in to start painting some of that, it's the color. And, uh, we're gonna have to find somebody to start helping to paint. Travis said he did, but we need to find somebody to help him. And we repaired, we had to replace one hydrant, our flip tops. And I've got this scotch and plin, Walter Wood, and we're trying to get some parts over to the other, not major parts, but trying to get some of the hazards or hard get parts.
Well, I know you said it was a problem. Now, parts are a problem with everybody now. So I think there was, was there twenty that we needed?
Uh-
It was a sm-
I think twelve, I believe.
Was it twelve? They need to be repaired, y'all repaired one of them and then they are gonna paint them. And we, of course, did this through the budget, it was only four thousand dollars, they hadn't been done in several years. So now we have a system, it'll be done annually through the fire department, which, uh, it is essential to have this too in the sensor. And now it's also on the G I S system, correct? So that's another thing that was added to it. Jessica, do you have anything else? So, Ray? Uh, if you can just give us that checklist, of course, we'll just keep, continue working. I talked to Chuck today, of course, I mean, that's like a daily thing. And then, uh, well, we did have another thing, we had been working on another multimodal grant besides the one we're gonna be utilizing through town with the state when they start working on the lots and the sidewalk and the bridge they're gonna be doing this fall. But we had another one, uh, about five years ago, where they revisited that with T-DOT and M-TAS. And so they were up Friday? I was walking, I think it was Friday, wasn't it, John? So they actually looked at this part of the street and correcting those sidewalks and fixing, and they're trying to find if they can do that. It would be five percent to whatever you get the state would have to pay. So they're in the process of trying to help us do that because we did, the other things were working. So, but we'll work on that one as well.
Okay.
Do you have anything? All right. Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. Okay. You know, the streets, the buildings.
Did we approve the impoundment?
No, is he here?
No.
We don't have anybody here for it, it's in temporary till they come. So, that'll be a temporary water also until it's gel up. I mean, it's just going through the process, but if the, we need to represent it for the next one, but hey, it does have a temporary status to it.
Yeah, this was in May, in June, August.
Well, we need to, we need to have him, you know, just come back and get through that so it's put the record on. Yeah. Okay, um, now, Janet, where are you? So, do you want to do, uh, one of the things that we're discussing this week was, of course, the corridor plan that used to be that we brought back up as far as the status on that, as far as the survey and where we're at.
I've got three reports, mayor.
Okay, well, whichever one you'll start with first, go for it.
I'm gonna start with the Planning Commission report first. The commissioners tabled the requests for Dale Lane to allow animals on his thirty-six acres rather than the fifty-eight, fifty acres that are required by the zoning. Uh, and they're tabled to, to get more information from Earl Gary. The lighting and the street ordinances that we were looking at, we put that on the table for a little longer because we're waiting for a specialist to give us some more information. The commissioner approved, um, the rezoning of the specific property from I one to I three, and you read that earlier at your workshop. And we recommended it-
R three.
From, to R three. I one to R three. And, um, we recommended that to the town council for them to make approval or not, and you have two or three readings of that. Dean Lay has an application to include apartments in C two zoning. And the commissioners requested from the Southeast Tennessee Development District to help us find a solution for apartments in C two zoning. It's all of that orange over there is C two, and so we're trying to get maybe a percentage of the C two to be allowed for apartments. Then, um, the other thing that we discussed was the, uh, Planned Convenience Center at seven hundred and forty West Main Street didn't have a completed plan for their landscaping, so that was tabled.
For what is it now?
The convenience center where the big, or the-
How convenient store?
Yeah.
Okay, because I didn't, and, and it sounds sort of like a Dunkin' Donuts and something. Yeah, it's multiple things, I guess.
Yeah, it's gonna be a convenience, s- little center like, and, um, or there's gonna be a restaurant or something there.
Okay.
And it's not completely designed yet, so we've tabled it.
Okay, okay.
So then the town hall meetings. We sent out the survey and it was supposed to be done on June the seventeenth. The results are in, I've given them to the, uh, aldermen and the planning commission and, uh, we'll be sending them out to the, uh, you're reviewing them, so you'll review them. And then we're gonna send them out to the citizens that attended the town hall meetings. And then the last thing I have is, um, South Cumberland Community Fund gave a grant to the town of Mount Eagle for seven thousand dollars for additional pit, uh, playground equipment at Hannah Pickett Park.
And this is to go in our playground and then we have, is it right, Jessica? This goes into yours. Three thousand more, which we got this, which we put fifty thousand dollars in the playground out there, got a thirty-year warranty on the products and stuff, so here's seven more, we have three more thousand, so we've got ten thousand more, we will be investing in our playground. And since some of this stuff overlaps, on July the thirtieth, the, um, signature over here, which is, I guess nursing home is what's the best term for it, uh, the director met with me and they're having what they're calling is a Jeep invasion. They've talked to the mountain market, talked to the fire department, talked to everyone about it. It's the nicer Jeeps that people drive. And they're expecting maybe a hundred this time and they're gonna have like food and cotton candy and like little snowball things for the residents. But they're also gonna sell this and all the entry fees is going to the playground. All the money that comes from the fundraiser is going to the playground because they're now partnering with us because with the playground, Jessica, correct me if I'm wrong, but you can beat away like three hundred and, some like pounds and play on the playground, correct? So adults can play on the playground with their children, grandchildren, uh, in the plans and designs which we submitted last year, maybe? There's also some of the things I can get set with your grandkids, Dean, or you could play with them, you know, and it's workable. And actually, we slid down the slides, so it's wide enough for some of us to get down. So, but it's at a point that you can enjoy that with your family as well as the blocking trail. Thank you. And I know we've got a couple other little grants that we're still working on.
Yes, we have.
That's out there for the fire department and some other things.
Right.
We do appreciate. Does anyone have any questions for Janet?
Thank you. I'm still your hero, I know.
We do appreciate it, thank you. Okay.
You know, my only comment is, I know that we've got playground equipment out here going in, but Hannah, but Harton Park up here is in desperate need of help.
What is it?
That gazebo is shot. I'm, I'm sorry, is shot. The sign is shot.
Well, the sign, we're trying to get, we're trying, well, actually, we're having signs come in. We have signs that Dominic ordered with, that can go up there, it says town of Mount Eagle, those were paid for by the state, but they haven't came in. Uh, the gazebo-
The gazebo is in bad shape.
Are we gonna take it down or are we gonna see if we can find donors for it? That's what they said, both of them are, so let's see if we can get donations for it because people need one.
The handrails is really bad down there.
Yeah.
Super bad. I found one out in the flower bed, one of the-
I think you can buy them handrails in sections, may not be the same as that, but I think you can buy them in sections, which covers your bit, and what, you know, grew them in there.
It really makes more, yeah.
It needs handrail stuff, I'm sure of it.
Well, I mean, we don't, I know you have somebody part time for, to work in the streets and to help y'all out, but the thing is, is that you also contacted two contractors and had a contractor to come last year and they never came. So you can try that again and see what it costs.
Let me, let me, I'll get the board, you all form witnesses. I'll get her on witnesses when we're gonna do it.
Look at both of them because the same thing was said out here. And I mean, we can take them down, but I mean, people utilizing, use them for Christmas, use it that, isn't really worth taking down or-
I don't want to take it down, but it does, it would be good.
It does, it does.
Well, I mean, let's go back at it again, it was like, your contractors didn't show up and see what we can find out and come back with the price at the next meeting. Or if somebody wants to donate, it's a good thing, we'll put your name on it. I mean, seriously, you know, as far as that, I said, huh? Okay.
I just saw that door, they didn't move.
Okay. All right. So, uh, she's, Jessica, you already parked and written, and we'll talk about activities and events, so who sends that sort of falls under that?
Certainly. Well, concerning the gazebos, we've been trying to get contractors to come and give us an estimate on the repairs and out of the ten people that said they were coming, nobody's ever come, so it's, uh, it's just hard to get things done right now with, with contracting work. But John, if you could look at it, that would be helpful. Concerning the baseball field fence over by the Chinese restaurant, one of the big trucks over there had knocked part of our baseball fence down and it was hard to get people to come give us an estimate for repair, but the Foxy Farms construction, uh, it came against a very reasonable, uh, estimate and the fence is now repaired, so that's done. For the Hannah Pickett Park playground equipment that we got the donation from South Cumberland Community Fund and thank you, some of those folks are, are here tonight, uh, we're gonna put with that three thousand dollars worth of community donations for ten thousand dollars of some new module of playground equipment that will attach to the equipment that was dedicated in April. And this, uh, company that we're working with is based out of Chattanooga, they are looking to see if there's some adult equipment that can be added to that original module so that while children are playing, some, the adults can do some sort of exercise. And we're not locked into that, but they'll give us an estimate. It's amazing to me how little you can get for ten thousand dollars. This equipment is all very, very expensive, um, and, um, we'll see what their recommendations are and if it looks like we need to wait to add the fire department money to get a better deal, we'll, we'll, we'll evaluate that. The fourth of July is Monday and this year our parade will start at ten o'clock on, uh, July the fourth. The theme this year is faith, family, and freedom. And we have three prizes that will be awarded to folks that are participating, uh, for the best expression of the theme, most creative floats and cars, and also the most town spirit. Groups that want to participate will gather at nine o'clock in the morning over at the V F W Hall and then we'll parade through the downtown area, ending down here at town hall. Our grand marshal this year, our grand marshals will be local military veterans that will ride a float that the town of Mount Eagle will, will have in the parade. Right now I have nine people that want to ride on the float, but I, I'm expecting there may be some others that will participate as well. In terms of the fireworks, which will occur at nine o'clock on the ball field, if it doesn't rain right now, rain's looking pretty, pretty, yeah, kinda iffy. But that'll be nine o'clock at the ball field. I think that may be all I have.
Well, you said, you told me the veterans you would like for them to meet up here so they can ride the float down, correct? Is that what you're gonna do still?
Right, the, any veterans that want to ride the grand marshal float will meet here at town hall, we'll take them to the start of the parade and bring them back here to where their cars will be parked.
And David Stappley and his crew or staff, I don't know what you call them, are the ones doing our fireworks again this year and they're taking care of all of that with whatever setup they need as far as what we need to have out there in our fire truck. Travis, but they'll contact you with what they need, but they put on a good show, so, and they do donate some of the fireworks for what we're doing. Yes, ma'am?
Jessica, you said you were gonna add fire money to the playground equipment, didn't you mean the-
It's from the, um-
Jeep invasion?
It's the Jeep invasion, yes.
Right, okay.
From the nursing home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Allen, I think you've been working on lights still that were donated, correct? And we have a little issue to get those fixed.
Yeah, well, I'm, I've had several happen just, uh, and there's been Keith and John and anybody that knows anything about light, I've been, I've looked at them. And, uh, I think we pretty well got it fixed except for one of the main lines when we changed lights, that switch that was on there, like a breaker switch, didn't work, so. And that, uh, we got some- And that, we got somebody coming up next tomorrow, Keith said or something, like.
Keith was out there today. Keith was out there.
No, well, Dennis, I was trying to think of Dennis, it was when he was there.
Keith called me today.
Did, so, has he been out there?
He, he was on the cover for Keith that took it off, our Keith, that took it off and he said he was waiting on Sam then. They somehow know they've got the power running straight through.
It's not going.
Their light weren't done at one, one of those.
So the lights are still on?
No, no.
No, can't get them.
Oh, they were on.
They were on, now they're not.
Now that they were on, they wouldn't go off, now they're off and it won't come on.
When you say Sam, we're talking about the electric co-op and we're also talking about the service, the electrical service we're using, which is Jacobs Electrical.
That's right.
And working with Air Keith and working with the other folks, okay. And they're all working together with you on the beginning of this.
Yeah, they, everybody's been great, Sam, I mean, it, part of that was up in his area, so that's in his problem, some of that was down there, but you know, those lights and stuff out there, they're old, I mean, they're older than I am, I'm getting older.
That's the reason we're working on that now, I mean, you know, but, I mean.
You're lucky, they got an extension cord, they're not through a pitch con.
Yeah.
Extension cord.
Well, that's a focus and you know, one of the things that, as far as revenue, you can't use enterprise funds, you've gotta have money and that comes from, you know, sales tax, occupancy tax and it comes from liquor by the drink and fuel tax, right? That's what we have, so you know, we've gotta look at how can we do this and be smarter as we grow and what we do and invest more money in that, because people, streets and salaries and fire and police and ball fields are not paid for, you know, that's, that's the only funding that we have for that, unless people donate money, you know, so, but we're working to get it done. Rome wasn't built in a day, we've not been here as long as zero.
You can get that, you can get that, I apologize, just.
But, and that's the reason we're working with all these grants in every avenue to try to get something and Janet's doing and others too, so. Do you have anything else for parking grants, thanks? I wanna thank Doreen and family and friends because they decorated the park for us and of course the end of town and are we putting the flags back out next, this week?
Yes.
So, and the flags will be going back out through town, but they worked really hard on that and this year you did have all your volunteers to help, but it looks really good and thank you. And that's the reason we could take down because they both sell many, but they have their pictures made, so we need to get our contractors back and figure out a way of fixing them if we can, so.
We'll have the flags out probably Wednesday. We didn't know what the weather was gonna be, chance of rain.
The ones that stand up and.
They're gonna go down the median.
Like we did before.
The big ones, the fifty, so much, so we'll have them out this week.
We've still got the flags on the post, correct? So everything else. And you'll have people here to help with the fire and police, or Keith will for July the fourth, because that's when we're doing all of our stuff, correct? I know we've got people to work and to pick up trash and do that kind of stuff, okay. Alright, and there is that one, so let's go to now reading your ordinances. The first ordinance that we have to read, this is our second one. Twenty one. Okay, the first one we have is a second reading on the budget for Mont Eagle twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three and we did the first reading on that, which is our annual budget for, it will end the fiscal year of June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Everybody's reviewed it, looked at it, went back over it, we've had CPAs, auditors and they come up and look at it, so do we have any questions, comments concerned?
No.
This time? Do we have a motion for the second reading?
I make a motion to approve second reading of the budget oh eight dash twenty-two.
Alright, do we have a second?
I'll say.
All in favor, well, no, let's still rub calls since it's the budget. Alvin?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Doreen?
Yes.
Myself?
Yes.
Okay, next, second reading on ordinance. Zero eight two two, is that it? Alright, these were questions about, we called the CPA and the auditor, just like today when we had the funds in John's account to bond on our condition, we still had to approve it, but we may have to move it from say like maintenance to equipment, because they've had some questions and of course we answered this at the workshop, so that's where the increases in education, supplies, repairs and maintenance, contractual services, which was three thousand supplies, of course gas and fuel, which was increased, health insurance for an employee, machinery, which, was that the lawnmower? That was our lawnmower on year the fifteen-three, salary increases, did we find, because I'm not sure, this may have been, we may have replaced someone. It's the end of the year and which totaled as far as moving from one section to the other, we're not utilizing anywhere, not even taking anything out of that, it's, that's where it makes the budget balance with the CPA and with the auditor. So that's the total amount, so this would be ordinance number zero eight two two, budget ordinance amendments for the budget of the Town of Mont Eagle for the fiscal year of twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. And what we did, we moved us and reallocated the seventy-one thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars, then we had a decrease in program services where we didn't utilize the money, so we have to zero that out and that was, that was a decrease in that amount by the five thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars. So, this is our second reading on this one, so this would be the second reading on ordinance number zero eight two two.
I think you need to adjust that, Doreen, you just.
Yeah, I just started to say, we just did that.
Well, no, one was just our budget and the other, same, that was, this is what we're doing right now, that was just the budget.
Yeah, we did the reading, okay.
Alright.
So I need to rephrase that.
First, yeah.
That I'm just going to approve the budget oh two, of the budget twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay, so let's, for the record, she's correcting that and so then, so you're making a motion, do we have a second for the approval of the second reading of the budget for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three?
I'll say.
And we're gonna do a roll call vote again, Alvin?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Doreen?
Yes.
Myself?
Yes.
Okay, now back to balancing the budget for the zero eight two two budget amendment. So, and for clarification, we said one of that was done and how we were doing it, because Nate had asked that question, he's not here tonight, but for the record.
Okay, so I'm gonna make the motion to approve ordinance oh eight dash twenty-two, the budget amendment.
Any other discussion? Don't, roll call vote, Alvin?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Doreen?
Yes.
Myself? Yes. In the third and final one is the second reading of ordinance zero nine two two, it says J.D. Oliver rezoning, but it's, I'm gonna read the property number, but it's the property you had from this, let me make sure I get this right, because there was.
We have to clarify this.
From I one to R three. And it's ordinance zero nine two two, an ordinance to amend the zoning map for the Town of Mont Eagle to rezone partial zero zero three point zero zero, Marion County map number forty-nine from I one industrial district to R three medium density residential district. So this would be our second reading on this ordinance, so we did their public hearing, of course the compact landing orders were sent out by CETA and of course this was a recommendation from the planning commission as we went through, so council.
The amount of that motion.
Yeah, we need a motion in a second.
Ordinance zero nine two two?
Yes, sir. Is that a motion, sir?
That's a motion, yes.
Alright, do we have a second? Any other discussion? All in favor? Business permits have been done. First reading of ordinance zero two two campground R three, campgrounds R three, where's the? Ten twenty-two. An ordinance to amend section zero five of the zoning ordinance for the Town of Mont Eagle, Tennessee to include campgrounds as the use of granted, as granted upon approval of specialist exceptions in R three sections one one zero seven. Now, for clarification, with special exceptions, they must be reviewed, you just don't do these and it must go through the process, just like anything else, like we did with the BZA and, you know, it goes to planning dimension and the BZA and those things are recommended, but it's saying with special exceptions allows that to be done on a case by case basis. And just for clarifications, there were four questions asked for the BZA board this last time to identify by our attorney special exceptions and that was done. It means it can be done for the benefit of the town and, and so that'll be addressed at the BZA board, but it is lawful, it's legal and you can do special exceptions and there's a definition for, for usage of land.
And this is not spot zoning because everything around it is R three?
Correct, well, not everything, but, but yes, you look at, it's not spot zoning. So, do we have a motion on the first reading of ordinance number ten twenty-two?
I make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
opposed?
Okay, council. Alvin?
Yes.
Do you have anything you want to discuss?
No.
Jessica? Doreen? Okay, one of the things for clarification and we do not have it here, but I do wanna bring it up, as many of us know and it's something that we had to deal with, there was issues with rezoning for our B team and for the neighbors and all that, because I'm not sure and I'm not gonna go into the record, but it will be a public record, that went to court in May, the Town of Mont Eagle was sued and the judge ruled in the Town of Mont Eagle's favor and all four charges, because we did the best for the town and the benefit and the welfare of the town. There's thirty-two pages and I don't have them tonight, but we can have them put online, so for the record, we're gonna have that, the findings put online, so if anybody wants to read it, they're welcome to do that, but the town, everybody, all the findings were ruled in the paper of Mont Eagle that we did to villages and what we were supposed to for the town to protect the town and we were protecting all residents, so, but we will put those online, so if anybody wants to read it, they're welcome to read it, because we only got those maybe two weeks ago. So, does any citizens have anything to say? Come right up there, sir. Body of yours.
I guess the first thing I wanted the council to talk about was, I came last week, I guess, and left an application for business permit and I talked to Earl about it and it's concerning Dixie Lee out here where Key Stop Truck Stop used to be, like nine one one has it as eight hundred Dixie Lee and then they've got it as eight twenty-four Dixie Lee.
Is that Chucks property?
No, this side, that's Chucks, there's the, Key Stop, then there was Tiny Town at Chucks and then there was the two acres, something that I sold to Michael. And, and, and just to kinda give you the history on it, a couple of years ago I bought that two point two five acres or whatever it is from Gene Nixon, I called it Concrete Farm for years, every time they would, T dot would cut up concrete on on ramps, off ramps, break check, they would take it out there and dump it. And so it was just a mountain of concrete and so I thought, well, I'll buy that and get rid of the concrete. Well, most of the concrete's gone, but some of it's still there, but that's Michael's problem now, he wanted that property. So, my original intent with that was, was to, I sell Conex boxes, if you're familiar with those, the shipping containers, ocean going shipping containers and, and of course right when I got into it, I had them down here on West College and right when I got into it, of course they quit shipping everything, so all, all the containers were still loaded in the ocean, but they're starting to release them and, and I sell them, I rent them to a business spot and out here I'm gonna go ahead and rent them on site and also do the RV storage on site, site boats, just an outside fenced in parking area like you see, kinda like what I call it, Bag and Stasi's out here, the, what is it, Copper Safe or whatever that is.
The rental, yeah.
If you look there, if you're going to the dump there off Tressel Road, you'll see they've got, they brought in mobile, they had the permanent structures to rent, they purchased the mobile metal structures and put them up and then you'll see campers parked out there, boats parked out there, anything with wheels on it, they pull in and out, so you rent those spots outside, it's fenced in, it's got a gate, which is what your ordinance says and, and all that. But anyway, long story short, I talked to Earl about the business thing on it and it's primarily gonna be done on the internet, so, just like Copper Safe, there's not an office at Copper Safe out there, there's not an employee there, you do everything on that and actually my business office is still at West College. Anyway, Earl said, he really didn't know that he suggests I talk to Anya. Well, that bells and whistles went off for some reason and I thought, I'd rather just come up here and see what the city's position is, I don't see, he said maybe a site plan and I don't agree with that and that may be the case, but if you look out that window right over the old kale station, you've got about eight or ten storage units sitting out there, been there for several months. And to my knowledge, it was never a site plan or anything done on, on that.
They're empty, I mean, they are, they're not rented yet, they haven't come to force for anything.
Well, I may not rent any of the ones up there.
And that's what I'm saying, so, that, this is the first I heard of that and I will say Earl left sick.
Well, now Earl's been good, I'm not dogging Earl at all.
But if you will submit, and again, you may have given it to Earl, but Earl tonight was sick and he left and that's, and he gave him what he could and I told him at college if he needed to, but he, he's taking medication, but don't worry, he's gonna have surgery and that's, you know, what.
Yeah, no, I don't wanna bother him, I'm just, I'm just trying to, to bring y'all up to speed on the facts as I see them and, and I can take them, I've got ten ordered and I, you know, if, if I can't put them out there, I'll take them back to West College and, and, and so.
But I don't know why you can have them out there, because you have them at West College, because I think that's done for it, so if you can, this is, I've been out some, unfortunately I'm out, but I'm back, so if you can give us the information, we can check and see, but I.
What information do you need?
Well, just what you said just then, we'll talk tomorrow and I'll find out if it's zoned or not, I don't know why you couldn't do it, there was a.
Well, I know on, on the, it's gotta be fenced and it's gonna have electronic access, I mean, all that's in your ordinance, but I, I saw nothing in there that said, I'm not gonna build any buildings, so.
It's just the fence, storage.
You're just talking about the storage place at that.
Yeah, that's what he's talking about, the storage place, ain't he?
Normally your site plans are required if you're gonna build a building or there's tapped spacing and you've gotta see that you've got enough parking spaces for the building and, and, but, but out there, the Key Stop, that's six point two acres and it's all just one, the interstate's on the, on the north side, Dixie Lee Highway's on the south side, the motel's on the west side and Dr. Wallace's property's on the east side and it's been a, it's, it, many of you may not remember Key Stop Truck Stop, but that came in, in the mid-seventies and they built the motel, they built the restaurant, they built the fuel islands and they built the shop built and they owned everything, he had several truck stops and it operated until J.C. came and built and, and then the motel sold off to two or three different people, then the CB shop, Mr. Kearns bought part of that property, operated CB shop out there for several years till he passed and I've got someone interested in a CB shop that I might build a structure and if I do, I would bring a site plan, if I build any, any structure, permanent structure, I would bring a site plan showing where it is, what it is and all that, but I'm not, at this point, I'm not asking for that.
So what you're saying is you're gonna build this, but you don't want your land tapping on it, right?
No, here's.
No.
But here's what, no, the building's, he's just wanting to put a, you're talking about putting up, and to answer that question, Dean, we'll find out what the answer is and they'll let you know, because I know there's been fences put on and nobody has had a site plan for it.
With Christian over there on his thing and, and I want the fence up.
Christians is totally different and we didn't do that, this, this is a totally different situation, there's another piece of property down there that they fenced it. So, I mean, I don't know it's required if you're putting up a fence up, now you'll need a business permit, but I know it's required that you have to do it for a fence, you're saying there's no.
Well, and it's not imperative that anything be voted on tonight, I'm just.
No, I'm just saying, and I can't answer that question until we deal with.
Well, I would encourage everybody to drive out by there in between now and the next time you meet or have a. or have a workshop and, and look at everything out there. Look over on the right-hand side of the road, see what you think about that. Uh, and drive on by and just, you know, look and, and, and draw your own conclusion. And, and if, if the city thinks it shouldn't, I shouldn't have Connex boxes out there, I'll just bring them back down here.
You're smart enough, you know what's supposed to be done out there, what's going on.
Well.
Well, that's the reason we're saying, can you give us a day or two first? Right away, it's supposed to be, and we'll go.
But now, this day or two, let's talk about that.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, I came up here well before Christmas talking about.
November.
Yeah, talking about apartments and zoning and, and.
Special exceptions.
Here it is, almost July.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And I know it's gone for the planning commission and, and, and that's fine. Maybe that's how it should happen. But you just a few minutes ago did a, a second reading on the ordinance oh nine twenty-two. And, and then you did the first reading on ordinance ten twenty-two, which allowed campgrounds in an R three. And I believe your words were it was done under special exceptions.
Correct.
And so it seems like they just brought this up last month about, uh, the project. Uh, it seemed like it was May, might have been April. And, and here, and I'm glad for them, but, but here it is, almost July. And before you couldn't do a campground in the R three, but after tonight, you can.
It's one reading.
Well.
Well, but I mean, yeah.
Uh, because of special exceptions. So what I'm asking you is, what's the difference in, in that special exception and a special exception that would allow apartments in a C two?
Well, if you recall back in November, and I, I actually did the research before all this other stuff happened and we've got to fix it because I also called, how do we fix it? Uh, I went back and we do record our meetings and the reasons why. When we changed that ordinance, and I don't have the ordinance in front of me, it was supposed to say special exceptions for use. And I was in a planning commission meeting because I had to go do something. Went to go pick up my husband's medication because we just got out of hospital. So I listened to her. So anyway, but to make a long story short, I went back and watched it. And so I did find out, how do we fix this? We're going to have to go back, change that ordinance and go through the process of having the planning commission. We, we did. It was an oversight on their fault because when we did the recording, it said, and Earl made the recommendation, it should say special exceptions to review your request. But because we approved it without that language in it, then we've got to fix the ordinance. We've got to go back through the process and do two readings to make sure it's done right. We have to do that. And you and I have not talked, but one time, I think, since that, in the last several weeks. And that's what I found out we have to fix and we will be fixing that. But it was an oversight and an error. I said, well, okay, we've got a recording that says it should have said the special exceptions. And they said, no, you have to go back and do the process, just like we had to with the planning commission when you had to read all the four terms we had to do. So that was air fault, it was air mistake collectively, and we've got to fix it. As soon as we get it fixed, that can be considered under special exceptions.
Does there any projected date?
Uh, yeah, actually, the projected date, as soon as, uh, we're working on getting those ordinance and amending it fixed. We're going to have a meeting on July the sixth, that that recommendation can be made. If we can do it the first reading in July, the public hearing, then we can have a special meeting to approve it. So we should be able to have it done by August or before. But that was an error that this, these councils and commissions made were human. And that's what happened. It was left out of the actual ordinance that was approved, just like the correction we had to make a long ago. So we made a mistake.
Okay, thank you for all that. What others say?
Okay.
I've, I've had a, I've got a party interested on, uh, the property where Sonic and the motel site was sold, that they're interested in, in a, in a likelihood of distillery. Uh, they're looking at the brewery versus distillery. But, but they, I, I met and talked with them and then I went back to do the research to make sure that, uh, that was allowed, you know, because of the zoning. And as I see it, it's a C two. Uh, and, and then I'm assuming this, the new zoning ordinance that was a twenty eighteen draft was, is basically what we're operating on, but the, the map was changed. Is that, I mean, I went online and looked at the one online today.
One online, stick it.
And it says the same thing as what I've got. But, but I'm assuming what I've got is correct. And, and, uh, on, on business and commercial uses under, uh, under breweries and distilleries, it says allowed in C one, C two, C three, and I one. Okay? And then you got to see section five ten. Okay, you go to section five ten on breweries and distilleries. It says breweries and distiller, distilleries shall comply with all applicable general provisions of this zoning ordinance and requirements of this section. Where there's a conflict with another regulation or dimensional requirement, the standards specified in this section shall control it. A, within the C three district, brewing and distillery operations shall only be approved if they are collocated, I guess, is that word? That's a new word for me, within a restaurant or on the same lot. Otherwise, no standalone breweries or distilleries shall be permitted within the C three district. Breweries and distilleries shall comply with all municipal code requirements and other Montegoal ordinances regulating the location and permitting of establishments involved in the manufacture or sale of alcoholic beverages. And my question to you guys is, were y'all aware that you had to have a restaurant in order to have a distillery?
No.
No, because it's not been before's before. Now, we read that. And actually, one of the things, I've had a committee doing it, and, and Provost is going to come to the next meeting because they're reviewing that and conflicts like you found, they've been working on it since last year. They're trying to clean those up. Nate's part of that committee. There's about seven different people that's on it. And he's going to make all these recommendations. But, you know, because we've not had anybody ask us about a brewery before, it's like there's a lot of things that we don't ask about.
Well, and, and, you know, I've got to get back with, with the people and, and give them some kind of, well, I've got to tell them right now, uh, a standalone distillery would not be allowed in the town of Montegoal.
In Seater and Grant?
In, in any. Well, and, and that's the other thing, right here in five ten, it says within the C three district shall only be approved. It's, it's implying that that's the only district you can have it. But up here on the page where it shows businesses and commercial uses on uses, or on zones permitted, it's got it, uh, under the C one, C two, C three, and I one, that it's allowed. Uh, but in this, and it says then additional requirements, uh, you go to section five ten and the additional requirement says within the C three district.
And what is it zone now?
C two.
C two.
Or that's what, what the map says. And, and so, but anyway, I think that's something, uh, you know, when you've got people interested in coming to the town and doing a business, and, and I wasn't worried about it. I said, well, yeah, you can do that. I thought, well, I'll very check, maybe, uh, maybe you can't do that. And lo and behold, as I read that, uh, you, you can't do that. And, and something unrelated to, to the distillery, but I didn't see anything about a winery in here. Uh, and it may be in there. I just, this afternoon, I got something about the winery issue. And, and I don't see anything, uh, on business and commercial uses. And, 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 uh, and I'm not going to build winery, but I mean, those are pretty common things. And, and I, I think it goes back to, you know, this, this, this paperwork was just taken off the shelf. And as I told y'all before, the planning commission, it's been used in lots of communities. And, and, and the communities have to take it and amend it and, and delete it and, and whatever you want to do. But, but I, I kind of need to know, uh, on distilleries, kind of what the council, uh, if they're willing to amend the ordinance or clarify that or whatever, not in the next few days. But I, I've got to talk to, to the investors and see, uh, and make them aware of it and just tell them, I've come before the city council, uh, brought it to your attention. And hopefully y'all will look at it and act on it in a reasonable period of time. And maybe if you might add that to the special exception that we did like we did to that. That's something to work real quick.
Well, it can be, is what he's saying. There's a conflict with those two. They are reviewing that, they're cleaning them up. I even asked you, you and I've talked about it, you said you don't feel like you would be involved in that committee because we recognized that when I started two years ago. They have made some, there's a lot more progress to be made. One of the things I think with those two things, and I'm talking about the cookie cutter you're reading there. Of course, that was a recommendation when it was accepted, like you said, a cookie cutter program. In the last five years, and you're aware of this, I mean, it's been happening longer, but a lot of distilleries are now standalone. At one time, you had to have X amount of food with alcohol. So those things have changed in the last five years extremely.
Some places, the brewery is still required to have food.
That's one thing, the brewery still may be, so it still may have, again, I don't have a brewery, but I know there's a lot have opened up in different places and they have some kind of snacks there. So I don't know what the ratio is the state requires because of alcohol. But yes, to say that is something that needs to be renewed can be considered according to what state law requires because that's the way, you know, alcohol is, is actually administered. We don't control all the laws with that, but it could be reviewed and it needs to be consistent, is what I say.
I'm confused. Okay, the property now is on C two. And it says that a brewery is allowed in C two.
C one, C two, C three.
But it cannot stand alone in C three. We don't care about C three.
Well, I don't know, I don't read it that way. I read it to think that, that, uh, uh, they, they don't know that it's in C one and C two and industrial.
Well, we'll get clarification for the definition you're asking about. And then also clarify, yes, how the state now handle that because it's become breweries and wineries have become standalone. Most that I know of do sell food, perhaps X amount of food. I think the ratios change. It used to be you had food for X amount of alcohol. Now I think it's just other way around.
Well, our liquor with drink was required of that when we first had it in, in that day. Uh, we had to have like sixty percent or whatever it was, uh, of food sales versus the alcoholic beverage.
And so this is something new. There's a lot of Ontario territory where repairs, we're fixing and also new things that are happening. So yes, we can give them an answer, we can't change it.
So, so back on the Connex issue, what, what do I need to do on that? I've got ten coming and I don't know when they're going to be here.
Uh, let's make some phone calls and see. I mean, we can't answer that, Earl's not here and I'm.
Yeah, I don't expect you to, I'm not, but, but when, when they come, I mean, those things weigh thirty-eight hundred pounds each.
Yeah, well, when are they coming?
Well.
I mean, technically a week, a day.
Well, with that, I would, they're supposed to be here by fifteen.
Well, we'll have you an answer before the.
And, and I don't want to offload them, uh, out here.
Can you back to me, but can you be here at the planning commission meeting? Are we going to have an answer on that?
Yes.
To fill up the July.
Tell me who's going to fill up July.
Next year.
Yeah.
Week in the water.
Because it's already very bright before Earl and then we can find out and have a definition then? Since this is, Art, we could get you an answer. You may not need to come to the planning commission, let us get you an answer.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I think you need to, to, to look at that and tell me why I need to do a site plan.
That's what I'm saying, I can't answer that tonight, but we will. So if we can get you answers for those things as soon as possible.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Can I ask you to do something, well, maybe you got to know, on all the things you want answers? Can you make sure you get that, we'll get that out tomorrow?
Okay.
And is one thing before you leave?
Yes.
Of course, I told you to check on it when I was out of town and I did call and find out how we fix the ordinance. We have to go back and fix that and we will, but that was our error leading up those two times. So, that answer you?
November, July, not that long.
Well, it wouldn't have, we did it in November, we just found out the errors were when you came back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens that need to be heard? Okay, if not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Do we have a second? All in favor? Thank you.